We're up and running, but I always pause it until.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at four o'clock. Everyone is present, even our newest members. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
If so, move.
Second, all in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Okay, we're going to introduce and approve our new board members. Who wants to go first, Jack?
I'm Jack Coburn, I am the mayor here in town, and I am very happy to be appointed to the board. And I'm sure with speaking to you previous ones and new members, I think we take our library to the next level. And we appreciate what has happened in the past and looking forward to make a brighter future.
Hi, I'm Katie Weir, I work at Prosperity State University in Residence Life. I'm really excited to be here.
I'm Molly McCord, I also work at Prosperity State University in the library. I've been there for six years. Previously worked for the public library system briefly before that. I'm also happy to be here.
Well, welcome. We'll introduce ourselves so that everybody knows who everyone is. I'm Renee Nysley, I'm the Board President, Board Chair, whatever you want to call me, pretty good. I've been called worse. I'm the Executive Director of the Local Management Board.
I'm Bill Bingman, I'm retired from Prospero.
You're also the Secretary.
And I'm also the Secretary.
Julie. I'm up. Hi, I'm Julie McCoy. My day job, I'm President and CEO for the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce.
Deb Hendrickson, my day job, Westwood Ward Elementary School Librarian, Teacher Librarian. You're also the Treasurer. I'm also the Secretary.
And I'm Lisa McKenney, I'm the Interim Director for the Library. It's nice to see you.
I'm Lexi Halterman. I'm the Director of Human Resources at the Allegheny County Library System.
My name is Shay Morse, I'm the Coordinator of Public Services, so I oversee the branch staff and programming.
Right, all, but those that I haven't met yet, Ashley Swinford, I'm Director of Marketing and Outreach at the Library System.
Hey, Renee.
I'm Renee Mason, Art and Graphics Coordinator.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve our new board members?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't even.
That's the new board members. They would be.
Abstentions. Okay. Meeting minutes from June 10. Everyone receive them, have you had a chance to look at them? Any additions, corrections? Do we have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? Any objections? Any abstentions?
Lisa, am I going too fast? No, okay.
All right, we have a new agenda, which there's a Board President Report on myself. We thought that this might be a very good time since we did not have an August meeting and a lot has happened since our last meeting. I'm going to give a summary of a statement for the closed meetings that we had. We had several closed meetings held between June 1st and August, oh yeah, 18th. I think, I don't know if they exactly, but it was leading up to the separation from John Tob and the library system. These meetings were convened to review and discuss his performance evaluation progress and implementation of a correction action plan. And in addition to those closed sessions, we also addressed closed sessions were addressed to his conduct related to library budget discussions and interactions with the public. And following the separation, the board met in a closed session to deliberate and determine the appointment of an interim director to ensure continuity of leadership and operations. This, I am going to make a statement of decision separation agreement with Mr. Tob. The library system Board of Trustees determined that we needed a change in leadership and that it was in the best interest of the organization. Our decision reflected the board's commitment to a forward-looking vision for the library system, one that positions our libraries as dynamic community hubs, providing diverse services and resources, including access to technology, educational programming, and safe inclusive spaces for all. Now, as we move forward, the board remains dedicated to exploring innovative strategies for revenue generation, strengthening community partnerships, and ensuring the library system continues to evolve to meet the needs of the people it serves. I'd also like to make a statement regarding the cancellation of our August 25 board meeting. The Board of Trustees decided to cancel the August 25, 2025 meeting based on the determination that the most effective use of our time during that period would be to focus on identifying candidates to fill the vacant board positions. It was a thorough and time-intensive process that required numerous hours, over 13, just in interviews alone, dedicated to interviews, evaluations, and discussion to ensure the selection of qualified committed individuals to serve the community through our library system. We had, we, as a Board of Trustees, the four of us that were remaining, did an approval of a member, Board of Trustees Member Selection Procedure. There was an outline to process to screen and interview and recommend new board members. We're going to need a motion for this. The library system, we opened an application process for candidates who were interested in serving. And that was done through a Google Google thing. I was going to say sheep, I knew that wasn't right. The application included the name, address, phone, experience, and statement as to why they would like to serve on the board. We received a total of 58 applications. We used a preliminary scoring rubric to fairly and objectively evaluate all the submissions. And this rubric was applied anonymously without names or personal identifiers and did not include questions about donations, volunteer hours, or public prominence. Our intent was to ensure equity and impartiality, giving every applicant a fair opportunity based on the information provided. We then chose the top 18 applicants and they were selected for interviews. We dedicated over, well, 45 minutes for each app interview. That was over 13 hours for just the interviews. And those were based solely on the average rubric scores. And ultimately, we took the top six names and we forwarded to the county commissioners for their consideration to fill the three available seats. And it's my understanding they called each and every applicant and then they made their decision on the top three. And that's how we have our new board members. So can we get a motion to approve our process for selecting new board members?
Number four, that we approved the process of the selection procedure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'd just like to say the commissioners were so happy with all six names, they said that they, it was really hard for them because the six names were all very excellent choices.
Yeah, they
Which was hard time. They had worked.
We also need a motion for our approval of our interim Executive Director Lisa McKenney, who was appointed July 18. After considerable discussion, the Board of Trustees unanimously agreed that Lisa McKenney was the clear and best choice to serve as an interim Executive Director. With her 31 years of dedicated service to the library system, Lisa brings a wealth of institutional knowledge, leadership experience, and a strong commitment to the organization's missions. While Ms. McKenney will be considered as a candidate for the permanent Executive Director role, the board remains committed to conducting a comprehensive search to ensure that the most qualified visionary leaders selected to guide the library system into the future. We have a motion to approve our interim Executive Director Lisa McKenney.
Take that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Final point is the announcement of the job advertisement and timeline for our search of permanent, for the permanent Executive Director. The Board of Trustees has officially released the vacancy announcement for the position of Executive Director of the Library System. The recruitment process is going to be conducted on nationwide scale with the position being advertised through the following platforms. Indeed, LinkedIn, Maryland Library Association Job Line, Library Job Line, Zip Recruiter, and the American Library Association Job List. The application window will remain open until October 10. Following the close of the application period, all submissions will be reviewed and interviews with qualified candidates will be scheduled during the last two weeks of October. A county representative will participate in the interview process to ensure broader community input and transparency. A final candidate will be selected through the completion of all interviews and deliberations and an official announcement is expected by November 14. Pending any unforeseen delays or changes to the timeline, the board is committed to a thorough and inclusive hiring process to ensure the selection of the leader who will uphold and advance the mission and values of OCLS. Any questions? Hi. Please say it to all you.
All right, so I have four activities to update the board about and then we'll do our normal review with the budget and financial reports as well. So first off, in the area of communication and needs assessment, I am going to, I'm in the process of visiting each library branch to talk with the staff and the departments and making a list of all of the different needs that the staff identify that are needed either for tools that they may need to do their, their jobs, anything with the building conditions that needs attention. So at this point, I have visited, I think, half of the branches. I have a couple more scheduled for this week and a couple more departments and branches for next week. So it's, the intent of this is to open up communication lines between myself and the branches and just create a list of all the different things that we need to work on for short-term and long-term goals. We have also, I've been also working on establishing communications with library support groups and such as Friends Groups and say the Western Port Library. Ashley went to the Friends of the South Cumberland last meeting and I went to Friends of the Washington Street Library's last meeting. So again, in the interest of opening up channels of communication with our support groups. I had some meetings with county personnel, was able to meet with Jason Bennett and Lee Beaman, Dan Dewitt, Adam Patterson, and Jim Filer, which I'll talk about a little bit later. I met with State Librarian Morgan Miller and finally had a meeting with the Western Maryland Regional Library Board. So I just, you know, some updates on, you know, all the communication and all the work that's going into just taking in all the information that we need to know about.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
In your travels throughout the different libraries, what is the tone?
Very good. I think that there is a tone of optimism. I think that everybody is a little curious about what's going to happen next, but overall, I think that everybody is, is feeling pretty good. The decisions that were made in the last couple of months were very shocking. And I think that after that, the staff had a variety of different reactions and emotions about the decision that was made. And I think that, you know, just trying to be respectful. You know, everyone is, deals with the information and the decisions that are made in different ways. But I think that we're all so kind of forward-thinking and looking ahead to the future and what, what work is ahead of us and what we need to do moving forward with our changes in leadership. So overall, you know, I think that everybody is doing very well.
Thank you.
The next update that I wanted to make was in regard to the Western Port Library. So right after the flood occurred, I think everybody is aware that there was a cleanup firm that was hired to come in and remove all the mud and the damage. And, you know, as we sit here right now, the building is in pretty good shape as far as it's, it needs to be put back together again, but as far as, you know, it's clean, everything that was able to be preserved is laid out on nice plastic sheets. And, you know, we, we've got drywall removed up about four feet. So there's, you know, the electric is kind of hanging there, we've got HVAC systems that are full of mud and they're, they were determined and confirmed yesterday to be not savable. So there's been a lot of that sort of assessment going on. As far as the insurance side of things is concerned, the library did have flood insurance in place whenever the branch flooded in the middle of May. And the adjuster came into the building in the midst of everything and was able to itemize all the different parts and pieces and estimate costs for what was going to need to go into getting the building back in order. And this resulted in a document that's called an estimate, Estimate of Loss. And that document was signed by Renee on July the 11th of 2025. So that is the itemized list of all the different expenses that are going to need to occur to get the building back in order. In addition to that, there was also an engineer team who came in to evaluate the actual structure of the, the Western Port Library as a building. And I compared that against the proof of loss estimate and I noticed that I didn't see any verbiage in the estimate of loss that really addressed what was being said in the engineer's report, which was, I sent an email to the adjuster and I said, "I was reading the itemized proof of loss estimate list over the weekend along with the report of findings from Keystone Experts", which is the engineer report. The report states Keystone recommends evaluating foam concrete leveling as a repair option to level out the three-foot by 30-foot section of the slab. If foam injection is not possible, Keystone recommends removal and replacement of the affected area in kind. It also talks about another separate area of vertical displacement of the concrete slab, which would require, quote, "10 square feet of grinding". In looking at the proof of estimate, loss, proof of loss estimate, I didn't see anything that seemed to address either the needed repairs that are recommended in the engineer's report. The reply from the adjuster states, "As per the engineer's report, areas of the concrete floor slab that were not leveled were due to differential movement as a result of saturated soils during the flood event. The General Property Form or the Flood Insurance Policy states, 'We do not insure for loss to property caused directly by earth movement, even if the earth movement is caused by a flood.' Some examples of earth movement that we do not cover are earthquake, landslide, land subsidence, sinkholes, destabilization, or movement of land that results from accumulation of water in subsurface land areas or gradual erosion." The next week, we received a letter from the flood insurance company stating the above. So boiling all of that down, that means that although we had flood insurance that covered some of the contents and the building as far as putting the drywall up, there is a section in the front of the building where the, the slab was actually undermined due to the flood and there was sinking happening in one area and heaving happening in another. So those costs were not covered by our flood insurance. So then it was, huh, what are we going to do about that? So the next step was, I set up a meeting with the county government to inform them of our situation and to try to get the library added to the FEMA appeal that they were working on. If you remember, the county submitted right after the flood occurred, the disaster relief appealed to FEMA and the initial response back that came back from the federal government was denied. So the county is, was appealing that decision. And in the course of, from the first time when they submitted the original FEMA request until the time that they ultimately submitted the appeal, there were additional identified damages that were folded into the FEMA appeal. So the library's interests were one of those things that was folded into the FEMA appeal that went in. You probably read about that in the news. So although there was a deadline by which the appeal needed to be submitted, it is not known when the federal government will respond to the appeal. So that is a question mark as far as when we're going to hear back about a decision. But in the meantime, I met with Dan Dewitt at the county to discuss what was not covered by our flood insurance. I sought advice for evaluating the problem in order to get estimates for the repairs to better understand the needed gap in funds. How much was this slab issue going to cost? I scheduled a time to meet with Dan Dewitt, Adam Patterson, and Jim Filer at the library for them to view the problem with the slab as well as discuss the library project overall. So these folks were able to see the, the issue for themselves and they had a variety of different, you know, opinions and, and they were also taking a look at some of the other damages in the building in addition to the slab. I shared the proof of loss estimate, the engineer's report, and the letter stating that the flood insurance would not cover the damages with the county team. The Allegheny County Department of Public Works is completing currently a detailed review of the line items outlined in the initial proof of loss summary document. The goal of Public Works' ongoing effort is to fully identify the scope as well as the estimated cost of any repairs that will not be covered by insurance. Public Works anticipates being able to provide more details to the library on suggested next steps by October. In the meantime, the library is committed to offering library services to the Western Port community while the library is out of commission. We have been holding weekly pop-up libraries, bringing library collections to the Western Port Library parking lot for patrons to check out. Pop-ups are held Mondays from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. They started in August and we plan to run them through October when we anticipate that the weather will be too cold for outdoor services to be offered. We have been researching available rental properties in Western Port. Last Saturday, I toured through a property that looks very promising for our needs and the costs are coming in at about $500 a month, which is doable for us. Assuming all goes well and the board approves, we would time things so that we could begin offering library services from this temporary location starting in November 2025. So again, the goal being that when the pop-up libraries end, we have a temporary quarter set up so that library services then start out of that rental property. The floor plan and design of the library is as yet undecided. We would like to get input from the Western Port community about what they want the library to look like, what services we should provide, et cetera. We are especially interested in hearing from non-library users. If you are not using the library currently, what would entice you to start using it? What features should the library have that would make you sign up for a library card and become a regular visitor? We plan to hold an in-person meeting in October and also provide an online survey option for those who cannot attend the in-person meeting. More information will be available soon with details about those opportunities to provide input. So I think that brings us up to speed as far as what's going on with the Western Port Library at this point. The next update I had for you was the formation of the Library Ambassador Program. One of the good ideas that was suggested, and I believe Shay was the one who suggested this in a meeting, was we've got all these great people who are applying to be Library Boards of Trustees, but, you know, ultimately, we only have three vacancies. So we, you know, as you said Renee, there were 58 applicants. How could we harness this enthusiasm for being a Library Board of Trustee? And, you know, the library needs help in a multitude of ways. What can we, what can we do to, you know, take advantage of having this pool of applicants that are eager to, to help the library be successful? So the idea was that we would create what we're, what we're calling the Library Ambassador Program. So we are excited to be starting a new opportunity for area supporters to become library ambassadors. The library, the Allegheny County Library System Ambassador Program is a dedicated task force made up of library staff, library Board of Trustees members, current Friends of the Library members, and volunteers. That plays a vital role in strengthening and sustaining our public libraries. This team supports the library system through strategic fundraising, community outreach, and advocacy. Members share experiences and ideas to better understand local needs, connect with residents, and champion library services. And acting as ambassadors, they help to secure resources, foster community partnerships, and build lasting relationships that keep our libraries vibrant and responsive. We're in the, currently in the planning stages now and hope to have our first meeting before the end of the calendar year, hopefully. So stay tuned for more information about this endeavor. In the meantime, we have invited candidates who apply to be Board of Trustees to participate in this Library Ambassador Program and we'll be reaching out to them with details shortly. And so the, the team that is working on this in the library, myself, Ashley Swinford, Director of Marketing and Outreach. We have Shay Morse, who is our Public Services Coordinator. And Renee Mason in the corner there, she is Arts and Graphics. So we're, we're all working together to, and you know, Renee did a fantastic job. She had a very detailed document that really helped us to get a jump on getting our plans together for what, what's about to happen next. So we're excited about it and we'll have more information about that very soon. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk to you about before the financial reports is Battle of the Books. This is so exciting. This is a potential new collaboration between the Ruth Unlo Library of Garrett County, Garrett County Public Schools, Allegheny County Library System, Bishop Walsh in Allegheny, in the Allegheny, did I say Allegheny County Library System? Let me start that again. It's the Ruth Unlo Library, it's Garrett County Public Schools, it's Allegheny County Library System, it's Bishop Walsh and Allegheny County Public Schools. Those are the group. And it's called Battle of the Books. And it's a fun, reading-based program for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders where we would create a reading list of books for each age group. They read the books and a competition is held where the students answer questions about what they have read to earn prizes. And our next planning meeting is tomorrow for this. Details are being worked out, but we're super excited to have a competitive reading program with our neighbors to the west to work on together. So that's, that's very exciting. So if you have any sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in the area, they are our target audience, there will be groups, I believe, of five people on a team. Shay, do you have anything else to add?
Home schoolers are also welcome. Yeah, we'll, we'll be looking for teams of five and also coach volunteers, which can be parents, but also high school students, teachers, community volunteers. So more information to come. And Renee was also helping us with some really lovely graphics on that. So that will be sharing, sharing more soon.
Yes. All right, so on to the financial reports.
I'd like to say that the Battle of Books is a great program. They've been doing it in Pennsylvania for many, many years. It's a great thing.
Yeah. Maybe, would you be interested in maybe being a coach?
Maybe.
Okay. We're probably looking for judges.
Board members, don't make any comments.
All right, so financial reports, we're looking at, in your packets, you have July and August. The profit and loss for July, the profit and loss for August. And then there are also the the account listing, which includes the balances on all of the libraries, operational accounts plus the special accounts that we have. So, starting with July, the library received just over $6,000 in gifts. And most of those were directed towards the Western Port Library Blood Recovery. We do have little cards on the table outside the door that give you the links and all the information for how you can donate towards our fundraisers for the Western Port Library. But we're grateful for the ongoing support to help cover the costs of getting the library back on its feet. On the expense side in July, we had in 60002 and in 69,000 grand expenses. We had, to update the hours of operation, we have these vinyl clings that go on the front doors that tell people when the libraries, each branch is open. So we had some expenses related to those. There was about $245.61 for the vinyl clings from our operating budget. And then we also had about $376.72 that was spent for a portion of the clings, but then also for some signing. that was spent for a portion of the clings, but then also for some signage to put outside the Westernport Library that be back soon. A sign that went up and also to update signage at the Frostburg Library where the collections are located. Additionally, in the grant expenses budget line, we had 3398.81, which was spent in staff development to send one staff member to the American Library Association Conference, one staff member to tech at the Gap, and to cover expenses related to training three new part-time employees. Moving on to August, again, starting in income side of things, $45,000, the gifts and memorials. We applied for and received the grant from the First United Dream Foundation in the amount of $5,000 for the Westernport Library. We received $400 from Save the Westernport Library for the purchase of giveaway books for the family fun nights at Georges Creek and Westernport that are in the works. And thanks to Kate Metzger for sharing the idea at our planning meeting about providing some giveaway books at those events. On the expenses side, in building tools and supplies, we spent around $436 updating the defibrillators, the AEDs in each of our branches. There is a law going into effect in January that public buildings are required to have AEDs in the buildings. So we're headed the game as far as having them. The expenses that we incurred here were to update the pads and the batteries to make sure that everything was in good shape and functional. 61005, the audit is progressing well. We spent 2725 for mid-July through mid-August. I was, I'm optimistic. I was told that if I could get documentation in by last Friday, that there's a possibility that the audit might be completed on time. So I I shared this information with one of my colleagues earlier, and they were like, don't hold your breath, but but I'm I'm going to be optimistic. 62002, Fluny and Sewer, we replaced the outdoors bigot at Washington Street for $286 in expense. 63008, software includes the annual Microsoft licensing for our staff and public computers in the amount of $2,593.80. And then last one that leads to 67005, liability insurance is our directors and officers insurance for $4,862. And as far as the bank balances are concerned, I wanted to point out that we do have a new category of 10,000 dash I, which is the Westernport Blood Insurance. That will be where all of the expenses related to Westernport on the whatever we expend things related to Westernport, that's the fund that those will go out. So I highlighted that on the July report that that was a new account there so that we can make sure that all those, all those things are being tracked separately and keep things straight. So that I think concludes all the financial report updates that I have for you, if there are any questions.
I do want to make foreign comment that you're continuing to do all of the accounting and bookkeeping.
Yes.
And as the interim director, we would be signing checks, but we have determined that Deb and myself will continue to sign checks for checks and balance system to just keep everything a buckboard.
Right. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve financials.
I said move.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The privacy policy statement.
I may have, I may have neglected to include that in the packet.
Okay. I didn't see it. There's a lot.
There's always.
I know. Do you want to table that till then?
We can table that for the next meeting.
All right, tabled. Library administrators update. I do want to make a comment. Library administrators is a new term. We are no longer using leadership team.
Okay, marketing and outreach. Okay. The, yeah, I'll start with the statistics and a little bit of the department highlights. But this evening I'll share highlights from the June and July statistics. That's what you have there in your packet. And when I talk about June, I've kind of talked about fiscal year '25 as a whole because June is the end of our fiscal year. So we have a whole years worth of data in that. So and then because the timing of the end of August, and I was on vacation last week, I know tsk tsk mean.
Well deserved.
We'll do the August statistics as well as September in the October meeting. That'll get us done. So if you would like to see those August numbers sooner, I'd be happy to share them probably by the end of this week. Should be, we'll get those in. But well, do you mind if I do them in reverse, July 1st? Um, so July 2025, again, it's the first month in our new fiscal year, fiscal year '26. You may notice many of our statistics are down over last July, but that is likely due to the unfortunate reduction of hours across all of our locations. On the positive side, program attendance continues to rise despite that hour reduction. And we've also seen several consecutive months of growth in physical circulation, which I think is also a good positive key keynote. That's kind of the the big highlights of July. That second page there has some feels good quotes and photos of Mason. Is the top left picture there. She just opened it up and we got here, oh. So you can see some of the great events that we had there in July and some new services that we're providing. So if anyone has any questions, if you look through some of the the larger packet there, right, they thought all of them might this time, Lisa? Everybody has? Yeah, yes. So if anybody's had any questions, when you go to flip through some of those more detailed reports, I'm happy to answer. And I'll talk about fiscal year '25 as a whole. As I mentioned, the June packet has that whole fiscal year's worth of data. But the highlight page or the first one there is just just June, but the rest of the packet, you'll see that in the 12 months with the data there. Program attendance broke ACLS records once again, up 4% over last year, which last year in itself was already a 25-year high in program attendance. So despite being one of the lowest-funded library systems in the state, we continue to rank alongside much more highly-funded libraries per capita in attendance. Very happy that that we're getting people coming in and they're as engaged as ever. So circulation and visits held steady. Average checkouts per hour declined slightly from fiscal year '24 to '25. Went from 81 to 78 checkouts per hour, and that's system-wide. And average visits per hour just slightly down as well, shifted from 35 visits per hour fiscal year '24 to 34 in fiscal year '25. And while overall visits were down slightly, 3%, again, the program attendance rose, showing that when people did come in, they're, like I said, more engaged and participating in our services. Any questions about the statistics of those?
Are you keeping statistics for the pop-up libraries and what's involved?
Yeah. I suppose. Yeah, yeah, I can share those. I know it's already been just offhand, so about 25.
Yeah, I would say, so we will, we will have circulation data and also the program data for that. We will count it both ways, but yeah, I would say probably about 20, 25 people. I haven't checked the numbers of checkups, but I know people are checking things out, so.
And we're happy with that, I think, compared to the past pop-up libraries we've done.
Yeah, it's been pretty consistent. Yeah, it's been a while since we've had a pop-up library event. I think it has been more consistent than the past.
Thank you. Of course. A couple other notable projects from the marketing department, which is Renee and myself. We are wrapping up the summer outreach events. The team represented the library at National Night Out and a couple back-to-school nights. And of course, offered materials, some other outreach things that we weren't physically able to go to, but still having a presence there. And then the public library survey is open, which is open from September 1st to September 30th. So that will be done by the end of this month, and that'll give us an even fuller picture of our growth and long-term trends.
We have a motion to approve the statistical report. The move. Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Shay?
All right, so I just wanted to take a minute and highlight some of the awesome programs that we had over our summer with our library this year. And it was a Color Our World theme. I almost forgot the theme for a second, but it was Color Our World. So that was, summer reading was all of June, all of July, and then the first two weeks of August. So for June, we had 15 programs at Frostburg. We had 13 programs at Georges Creek, 22 programs at Lavelle, 29 programs at South Cumberland, 12 programs at Washington Street. We had four storytimes and our kickoff. So we had 91 programs at the branches and five storycorps programs for a total of 96 programs in June. July, we had 22 at South Cumberland, 21 programs at Lavelle. We had 11 programs each at Georges Creek and Washington Street, and then 10 programs at Frostburg. Our storycorps did a whopping 11 storytime storytimes in July as and one other event when they were at the fair. So we had 76 branch programs and 12 storycorps programs for 88 total programs in July. And then just in the first two weeks of August, we had eight programs at South Cumberland, five at Lavelle, four each at Frostburg and Washington Street. And then we were able to have two at Westernport because that's when the pop-up libraries restarted. And then we did have one at Georges Creek as well with two storytime, two storytimes and one other storycorps event for 24 programs at the branches, three storytime programs for 27 total programs in just the first two weeks of August. So overall, that was 191 programs in 10 weeks at our branches. So I'd just really like to congratulate and highlight my branch staff for all that hard work of putting on an average of 19 programs a week for our wonderful patrons. And then also our Small But Mighty StoryCorps team of Ms. Kate, Ms. Stacy, and Ms. Misty, who did 20 programs in nine weeks. So that was an average of two weekly programs. But they did do a lot of three-week programs when they had storytimes on Tuesdays and Thursdays and indoor storytimes in July. So they had 2,000, just over 2,500 total program attendance ju- just for our storycorps programs. And then just to highlight a couple individual programs, we had a DIY eco-friendly laundry detergent at Georges Creek on June 2nd that 13 people attended. We had meal-in-a-mug picnics at South Cumberland for children ages 11 to 16. And we had those on June 17th, July 11th, and July 25th, and we had 42 people across those three events. Frostburg had a paint and squish, squash mellow portrait painting. It was a really fun event on August 7th that they had 24 people. I think they're looking to repeat that program because it was so well-received. Lavelle has continued, had to have success with their teen craft series. So they did paper taxidermy, paper lanterns, and then recycled CD mosaics. And those are taken-made crafts that they do for teens. And we had the pop-up libraries starting in August and scheduled through October, as we mentioned. And we are now able to take holds to patrons at those events. So if we have any people in the Westernport area, they can pick their holds up at those pop-ups. Just reach out to any of our staff, Kathy, Regina, Sherry, and they can get you set up for that. And Washington Street had a 91st birthday celebration that had face painting, party games, and crafts, while also promoting local history for kids. And that was on June 17th, and they had 50 people in attendance at that event. And then just some storycorps highlights, their most attended outdoor storytime was at Constitution Park with 203 attendance at that one event. Their most attended indoor storytime was on June 25th at Lavelle with 87 people. And then our kickoff event that all of the staff were at had 481 attendees. And then I'll just quickly go over some of the reading log numbers. So at Washington Street, for our reading logs, we had 126 total logs with 50 participants. And the the most category at Washington Street was six to 12-year-olds. At Westernport, we had 19 logs returned by seven participants with the 19-plus, the category having the most participants there. Frostburg, we had 121 logs, over 70 participants. Again, our six to 12 age group was the most popular there. Six to 12 was also most popular at Georges Creek, where we had 53 total logs returned, over 30 participants. Lavelle had the most logs returned for their birth to five age group. They had 312 total logs, over 148 participants. And then South Cumberland had also the most participants in the six to 12 age group. They had 108 logs returned, over 55 participants. So for total logs returned, that was 739 over, for 360 total participants. In 2024, we had 313 logs and 169 total participants. So for the logs returned, we saw a 136% increase over last year. And then for the participants, we saw 113% increase. And, you know, over 700 logs returned, that's, you know, estimated around 7,000 books read by our community. So lots of wonderful things happening with our summer reading program. Ms. Kate was also on vacation last week, so we should be getting the prizes out soon. And look at our, check our social medias for some of those posts of our our participants getting their prizes.
That's awesome.
It's a huge amount of work that goes in.
You all needed a vacation.
Huge amount of work on all fronts for summer, so shout out to our staff for doing amazing things.
Okay, human resources.
All right, bear with me. I'm not good with the crowd, and this is my first board meeting.
Okay.
Ramon friend. Maybe I'll stand outside the door. So I've been here for about, I did write something fancy, but throwing it out the window. I've been here for about 12 weeks now, so I really spent the first, I'd say, month keeping my nose above the water. But in that time now, I've looked into some HRIS systems to try to make some of the things that we do a little bit easier and more inclusive for the administration so we can all kind of look at the same statistics instead of having a bunch of random sheets. I updated the staff site. I've been diligently sending out staff development opportunities to the staff. I get a lot of emails coming in from somebody named Jennifer and somebody named Barbara. I wish I could remember the last name right now. Yes. And so I've been sending those out a lot. There's been a decent amount of people coming up to me. Four or five, but no, four or five every 12 weeks. It's good to me. I've done two audits, Trevor's audit, Gaz's audit, so those were delightful. And then something that we're focusing on more is staff rewards and recognition. So a big thing that I discovered working here is that the staff love to be here, the community loves the organization. And we really rely on a lot of our staff members to do the programs, to make sure that things are working. So we came together to discuss kind of how we can give them the recognition that they deserve. And what we did is we actually took it out to our August all-staff meeting. Yeah, it's September. Sorry, I told them that with a crowd. We took it to the staff meeting and we asked them directly, what is going to make you all feel rewarded? What is going to make you feel recognized from us? You know, monetary, non-monetary. What is going to make you all feel rewarded? What is going to make you feel recognized from us? You know, monetary, non-monetary. So we got a row-long list. Um, and the plan, hey, we told them to say anything and everything. Honestly, if they want a cookie on their birthday, I'll give them ten. So our plan moving forward with that list is to kind of dissect the feasibility of each one, and then once we can determine if it's feasible or not. For the organization, then we will work on implementation. Um, so that's kind of starting. What we have right now is kudos suggestions. We have a featured employee. I kind of did all that and then brought it back. And then I think the very first effort that we're putting in is recognition for the staff's birthdays. So I put it all into a calendar. And then right now we're deciding on e-cards or the gift card or just an e-card or just some sort of token for them that we're like, hey. Maybe you're not at work today, but we know it's your birthday and we appreciate you. So. And then something that I put in is I was like, you know, I feel like improving our recognition and rewards for staff. It for our staff is one of the first steps towards pushing towards that future and the change in the culture that we've all been discussing throughout the past few months. It's kind of what we've got in motion.
I always enjoyed seeing it in a previous newsletter, years of service. That was always. One of my neighbors, Linda Zeller, was a longtime employee and I'd see her picture and think. Wow, Linda's been there maybe fifteen years or whatever. It, that was always a nice thing. For me as a, and I was on the board probably at the time, just as a public reader of the newsletter.
I should be able to share the list with you guys. If you want to see kind of what they all come up with, I can send it over to you. That would be great. Yeah, absolutely.
I like to focus on the awards. I I I guess desperately need.
I do too.
Yeah, we want to recognize our staff. They're doing a fantastic job. I mean, just the lot, summer program alone, my goodness. And this hasn't been an easy summer.
Really, not that many, more than thirty people. That's a, it's a small staff that does.
They're very deserving. Be interested to see with me.
And that's a year of part-time.
Yes.
Keep that in mind.
Yes. HR may not be a part-time position.
So, in some ways it is, in other ways it's not. I'm here for the organization and I'm here to. Be a nonprofit, to work for the public. So I want to support the staff by doing that. Yes, I can do the backend things and the data and the admin, but whatever. That, that's that. I want to be here for the people and that's the human part of human resources and that's what I really confide in when it comes to my position. And with being part-time, sometimes it's hard, but it's just, that's how I look at it.
Well, we appreciate it.
Yes.
I'm happy to be here.
Happy to have you.
And you did great on your first term.
Yeah, really?
Yes.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Good debut.
Thank you.
I should wear a tiara.
Well, Jason is not here for his IT or facilities update, but he does exist. I can tell you that. I've seen him.
Yeah.
On several occasions.
He's worked for the library system probably at least fifteen years.
Oh, I think it's longer than that at this point, yeah. Yes, Jason is our IT um, director, but um, he's been very wonderful to. You know, right, right after the leadership changes took place, um, we could think of no one better to um, have. The intake from all the facilities-related needs for the library system because he is just an encyclopedic knowledge of. Um, everything that's going on with the branches. If you talk to him about, well, why is the HVAC system this way in this branch? He will, he will tell you everything from a, you know, seven-year history. So he's, he's a great resource and um. Uh, has been wonderful in in taking care of those things. So as far as like specific updates, we're. Uh, we're getting some estimates for the second floor mezzanine. Uh, apparently the compressor has not been working and for over a year at Washington Street. On the second floor. So that leads to um, the conditions on the mezzanine being much hotter. Um, so when people are browsing around or wanting to use the study room upstairs, that's a problem. So. We um, are getting some, we have some quotes for how much that's going to cost. Um, but then also just uh, he's been tackling um, the things that break, the handicapped accessible doors at Lavelle. Malfunctioned, calling a plumber uh, for a faucet that was having issues. So. He's been doing a wonderful job with um, and again, this is on top of his, his normal duties as well. So we're really thankful to Jason for taking on the facilities. And maybe one day we'll get him, you know, to to a meeting.
Okay, we are. Follow comments. Um, Jim Ritchie.
Um, in our last meeting, our friends of the George Port Library decided if you'd like to make a donation. And um, I have a check here for a thousand dollars. It's um. There are no strings attached. This can be used for everyday expenses, whatever.
Okay.
So we're happy.
Thank you so much.
Hi. Trish.
Hello, everyone. Some of you know me, some of you don't. So I wanted to speak on behalf of Save the Westernport Library. Nonprofit organization in Westernport dedicated to save the library as well as sustain the library. So. I'd like to welcome the three of you to the board. Um, you may have heard about me. Um, I have been a little contentious um, and uh, very mission-oriented. Uh, and wanting to point out things that maybe needed pointed out as well as our committee believe that as well. And so we stand here today and I say thank you for all of the time and effort that you put into. Uh, growing your program. We too are look looking to the future and we're very excited to see these new things that are happening. This growth in your programs and new faces on the board. Um, new initiatives. We're very excited to have a partnership with you that's transparent and energetic and enthusiastic. And upfront and we're willing to work with you any way that we can to help things move along. At least especially with Westernport Library, we're very eager to see that come to fruition again. Um, but it is very nice to meet you new people. Um, and very nice to speak on a a polite and um, nice manner. And uh, I'm a nice person, believe it or not. For those of you who know me, you may know that. Um, but I, it's a pleasure to be here and be able to be grateful what has happened over the past three months. And the things that gone on behind the scenes that we didn't know of. And the things that are happening behind the scenes with the Westernport Library and the foundation, et cetera. So we're glad to hear that that's moving in a good direction as well. So please know that Save the Westernport Library is here for the same reasons that you are, although you have a bigger scope than we do. But we're here to save our library, sustain it, just like you will be doing so, and we're willing to work with you any way that we can. So thank you for listening.
Becky.
I'm listening, so I'm not talking to people's backs. Um, there's so much I want to say. I'll try to be brief. First of all, in one hour, I've heard more positivity. Than I've heard in five years, and I feel so good about this. I think we're moving in a good direction. And I did go to the county commissioners meeting to say thank you. A lot of you weren't there. I just want to say the four remaining members of the board that have worked so hard on this, you guys are amazing. Thank you. We were a little bit impatient because we didn't know what was going on. But looking back, we can see the hard work that you put into this, the thought that you put into this, and it was absolutely awesome. We're excited for the three new members. Um. This, and and this, this library, I love this library. It makes me happy being inside of this building. But I will also say that whatever library I am standing in is my favorite at that moment, always. But I I need to take like a week off of work and come here and just sit and and read. This, these awesome things that are in this room. Every one of our branches is unique. And everyone represents its own community so well. And that's why we have fought so hard for this is because we know how important it is to each individual community. And Jack, I know this is, this is you. A lot of this is you. We've put blood, sweat, and tears into this and thank you for that. I do also, Trish and I think in a parallel line. We've been contentious at times. We didn't always necessarily mean to be or even realize that we were sometimes until somebody called us out on it. And I do want to apologize to anybody that felt attacked or, you know, felt that I was directing any sort of. Of criticism towards them. I never meant that. We became the face of the library to the citizens of Westernport when we stood up and talked. And our mission was to get answers and to be able to explain to people what's going on.
Yeah.
Um, along those lines, Lisa, I just want to verify, is there anything said today that we should not repeat?
Uh, we're probably going to be putting out a public statement um, with all of the, what we've just updated. This is a public meeting. Okay. So everything that we've said at the public meeting is, is going to be, you know, we are going to be releasing that information.
Okay, I'll wait till I see that before I say anything. And I want to let you know, good news travels fast and small to now. We already have been questioned about, is the library being moved?
Oh.
Yes.
But we had no idea. Now we know what the story is. We'll, we'll let you make that announcement, but when people question us, we will understand. And Molly, I want to tell you, you are now the face of Westernport. I, I knew your mother, I mean, I grew up with your mother. My children have grown up in your generation. And we know that you care about Westernport. We have had questions about you not living inside as a boundaries of Westernport. But we feel very good that you are going to be.
I'm there at least three to four days a week because my mom and dad still watch my kids, so.
So, uh, you know, if you get any pushback, we're, we were backing you one hundred percent. We just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Lisa, I, I mean, what you stepped into, what you have done is just absolutely incredible. And I just want to say to the board, please keep this in mind. When you're, when you're reading that rubric and and giving scores and whatever. The process is going to be for hiring the new permanent director. Wow, what she has done in this little bit of time is absolutely awesome. Keep that at the front of your mind, please. And thanks to all of you. That's everything.
Thank you. That's it for our public comment, and I just wanted to make a statement that. As the board president, chair, whatever you want to call me, that has not been an easy four months. Um, I've had a lot of responsibility for the library system, but the staff. In the library system are amazing. And we know the passion that not only the community, but the library staff have for the library. And we keep that in the front of our minds every time we look at anything that we have to do. But we still look at this as our job of doing what needs to be done. So, yeah, we've made some very hard decisions and will continue to um, make hard decisions. But Lisa has been phenomenal in taking the reins and moving forward, very easy to work with. And we as a board want to be as transparent as possible, but please understand that sometimes we can't disclose things that are happening. Um, just trust in the fact that we're doing what we need to do to make sure that the libraries that are sustainable. Right, okay. Any closing remarks? Oh, I do want to say.
To make a closing remark.
Well, I want to just um, in, in reference to what Vicki said. We, at the bottom of our agenda, we follow the Open Meetings Act. So um, everything is above board and everything that has, all of our closed meetings have. We have to follow all of that, so.
Just, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Go ahead though.
Uh, and I'm speaking, I think for all, the proof, the four of us that have gone through this. I think we have been extremely blessed to have a chair that's been phenomenal. Renee has done. I can't even imagine what, you know, I, 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 the four or five emails I get every day just from the library. And then she, she's getting ten, you know, it's what she has done. She has held us together. I think, I think she needs to have a round of applause. I really do.
There is nothing else? Can we have a motion to adjourn? I think this is a record.
Look, we even got new folders.
Yeah.
Yes. I'd like to recycle the folders, please.
We have a motion. I'm sorry, I didn't.
I got excited. We have a new folder. My name's not now.
There doesn't need to be a.